So. So. But it's still. You said that's all. So. You know, they're doing the.
Really.
He told me that. I told him there's some. Probably. Yeah. We love it, but he's got to make the. Put it right in one time.
Thank you.
He was so.
He's.
My. He's very unfortunate.
That's why I'm.
I'm. What? I just. Yeah. Yeah. And yes.
Yes.
So. The last two. Card. Of course. Oh, it's. That's some of them. That's broken. So. Yeah. I'm sorry. That whole. Scary. Once. They're once. She's. Yeah. Very sorry. Yeah.
It was funny. I don't think that that shot. I'm.
Which I know. Yeah. Shot. All the. Yeah. So. Yeah. But. What I'm like. Maybe you should have ten hours. No show.
Yeah.
These are. And so. Do you have that? They were.
Six thirty.
One more. Ever. I'm. Anyway. Next. People. First, that's very. Very. I have a show and then it's expected. They wrote the laws. So I have to know what show. So I do that. That's. That's. Yeah. Well. You don't know. And that's much. That. I don't know. Actually. I said. I felt like. After. Eight. No way. It's all. I think they.
Well.
Yeah. I don't see. I don't. I don't. See. I go.
How much?
So. You show. Well. Say. Yeah. Can we make your. Position. And say.
Yeah.
Very good. Until. And. Then. To. But. I said. This should. Work. Six.
Please stand. The third. I'm. 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 I. I play.
By. United States of America. Into the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Don't play.
Public participation. Can we reach the desk and counsel please fill out appropriate being here as part of the Senate to the town secretary? Please indicate on the form if you wish to speak during a discussion on a specific agenda either during public participation. Remember, council members are not allowed to enter party during public participation. Please state your name, address, the record. You remember. And no one's under. Appointed representative liaison on Upper Trinity. Yeah. They was not here. You know, did you? Hey, do. Honestly. We're going to crush your fingers.
You're.
You may be. Oh.
Over here. Yeah. About twenty years ago, uh, city of La Dounia invited Upper Trinity, uh, to. Uh, build the lake. Up. For water supply. La Dounia needed a new economic development, uh, engine for their area. And so that started a journey between the city of, uh, La Dounia and Upper Trinity as well as Fannin County.
To ensure, uh, the water quality for this reservoir in the city built. The district, uh, commissioned a comprehensive study, uh, land use planning activity with the local citizens and stakeholders. This led to the formation of the study and a zoning commission development. And now we're working on the final elements of that project so that there will be a template or a guide for development around the reservoir.
Upper Trinity, Fannin County, and the city of La Dounia worked together to develop the comprehensive method plan and zoning regulations around the lake. Uh, those regulations and that comprehensive plan is important because we need to make sure development around the lake is done in a manner that protects the water quality.
The comprehensive plan was used to be a roadmap for future development around Lake Ralph Hall. So developers or other individuals that are looking to to buy land or to do things in the future, they know the areas that certain things are allowed. It can be strategic in in their purchases and in their development activities. It's Fannin County's land. It's it's the people's land. And it's the citizens of Fannin County that that ultimately are gonna are gonna benefit from, um. What I view is is really an economic engine, uh, that will drive, uh, development and and business here, uh, for years to come. And so it was critical to get that input. There were public meetings held in, um, a couple of different areas. So we brought the public in, uh, we asked them for input. There were storyboards up and charts and they actually could put colored stickers on some of the graphics to say, yes, I like this. No, we don't want this. So all that in- input and that information was taken in to begin build the comprehensive plan.
I believe the comprehensive plan is very beneficial to the community. It's important to have steps in place for a clear vision when you're doing any sort of development.
Economics and the benefits of of adding up a lake like. Lake Ralph Hall will benefit all members of Fannin County, even if you don't live near the lake. Um, there's a tax base that the development around the lake's going to go into. So that we've already seen benefits of of another lake, uh, in that. And that's only going to benefit everybody from that standpoint. And then those in in La Dounia and the immediate area, they'll see benefits from people counting, spending in that, spending money in restaurants and and whatever. Commercial shops and those type things, uh, come along following the opening of the lake.
We believe Lake Ralph Hall is bringing in several opportunities. We believe that it's going to bring in much more. There's going to be tourists coming and looking at it. There's going to be new stores opening up. We've already seen new people moving in to be closely. So with more more opportunities, more jobs, then that just brings a better quality living too, unless it take down.
I understand. But.
The shoreline area around Lake Ralph Hall, uh, between the water and the private property, uh, we understand that that will be accessed by those adjacent properties. And we needed regulations and rules in place so that when they access that land area, that it doesn't hurt the lake. We are required to maintain a natural area around the lake per our permit for, uh, this water body. And so we are putting those plans in place now. So that we'll have proper regulations for boat docks, private uses, that sort of thing, as you, uh, engage the lake as a private land. Lake Ralph Hall will be a public lake that's open for use for open recreation. So the the areas in the in the water surface, of course, will be used by the public, you know, promoting normal skiing, fishing, all those sorts of normal uses for lakes. Uh, there are a few other features that'll be here that'll be, uh, usable by the public, including a couple of interesting things. One of them being, uh, the new fishing jetty we're building and built just off of, uh, the Hobbit, the new Hobbit Ferryport Bridge. Where you don't actually have to have a boat to fish at Lake Ralph Hall. You can actually go to the fishing jetty and you can fish from there. Uh, there are a couple of other opportunities. We have several boat, uh, ramps planned, one in the boat Tesla area, one over the FM fifteen fifteen north area, and one of them coming out of, uh, La Dounia on FM twenty nine ninety. To access the lake. Those are three public areas where you will be able to launch your boat and have access to the lake. We recognize fossil hunting is very important to the local region, especially the city of La Dounia. And the original fossil park was right here at highway, uh, thirty four, which will be inundated with water. And so we, uh, Upper Trinity has endeavored to relocate that fossil park down behind the dam on the Salt River so that those opportunities will continue.
Upper Trinity wanted to be a part of this community as well as we want to be a part of the building of the lake and the vision that they had for the lake. We worked really well together. We've, uh, uh, attained a lot of goals, uh, together, I do believe. Upper Trinity's been a blessing to our community and, um, we just look forward to a continued relationship, working well together and seeing the success of Lake Ralph Hall. It's a vision that others had that is coming true and it's gonna be such a big opportunity for La Dounia to grow. Thank you. Thank you. Number two, Denton County Emergency Service Department.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me. Um, you probably have received the month report. Did, uh, we made three hundred forty seven calls last month and not what's the like problem record, but it is our busiest August we've ever had in the last five years, uh, which is a trend we just continue to see. We're still tracking at eighteen, eighteen percent increase year to date from last year. Uh, again, the, you know, some typical healthy growth would be three, five percent. We tripled that, so we continue, we're tracking right along where we are, but we are staying busy. Uh, if you recall last month, we approved our budget, which was a big thing. We're starting to execute that budget even this month. Uh, in that budget, we included, of course, the new ambulants, section five thirty two on complicated road, which serves, uh, Bartonville. Also includes the new fire station that will be at I thirty five and Jeff Earnhardt. And of course, you've got to hire all the personnel with that ambulance in the fire station. So we're looking at hiring twenty one personnel. Uh, I think last month, I recall, we had about well over fifty, over fifty applicants through the process of background checks. We got that down about twenty two. And now we just did the interview process and we're down to about twenty people. So hopefully none of those people will like take jobs under the place because it is competitive market. So. It won't be a hundred of those last version year. You gotta get that process going because it is all the diagrams that you have to do to make that happen. Other thing we're working on, uh, obviously we, this, uh, through September eleventh, uh, we had our, uh, annual blood drive. That's our way of something that's dear to me as a veteran. I feel like, you know, one thing that we can do instead of having some ceremony, let's give back to communities. So we do an annual blood drive, uh, based on that, but from the current blood drive, we we think that's where we save seventy five lives, which is always a good, you know, thing to do. Um, and then we're always working for others, looking for others there. I think we can do it, community. That's one of the big things I'd like to do is give back to the community. So in October, on October fifth, we have scheduled a, a, um, a, uh, community vaccine clinic. Station, uh, five eleven, where you can go get free, uh, vaccine, flu, COVID nineteen, shingles. And so I think it's free, but you do need a free registration card. Another on October fifth from ten AM to three, that's what we're looking at. And we're looking for stuff for November. So we got some ideas, I don't have the details yet, but we're wanting for veterans today. We're wanting, we get a lot of old flags. And so we're going to try to find someplace out in the county, the county that burned, we're going to do a ceremony, you know? Uh, they honor the flag and they do a kind of flag burning ceremony, including the Boy Scouts. And so again, to me, that's important to me, uh, something I, when I came here, the gear we involved being out in the duty because. It's important that you build those relationships in the front. Don't want to have a relationship with the staff or the current. And so it's just another way we can give back and also build relationships. Uh. Another big thing we have coming up on October, uh, second, we've got our second, um, community stakeover advisory board meeting. So Mayor, I know you should be there. That probably here as well. And so all the town mayors and councils and, uh, maybe we have some school that can please keep up and can be there as well. And so it'll be our opportunity to have. And a little bit different format, but rather than actually track it right there. And so allow us to go. So what one thing that we talked about is our three years to plan. You recall back in June, we had our first, uh. Strategic bit, uh, workshop planned between ESPN one and two. That was on June fourteenth and fifteenth, when we sat around and team building, uh, got a board and figured our strengths, which is refunding mission, all the same. And we came up with some creative plan. So that draft, uh, we've been working on is ready to go to the board this Thursday. It's still a draft, we're going to prove that, get some direction on it. And we hope that it'll go over that after the stakeover game. So a lot of good things are happening, which, you know. The machine just keeps moving, we're working hard every day. And so with that, I'll take any questions out of.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Two thirty.
Thank you.
It's important.
Yeah.
Allows us to be out.
Thank you. Which department are you? We got. Very much just as now, T P Chief.
Mayor and Council, good evening. You have your, uh, the packet in front of you. You'll notice our calls have gone down this month. Uh. I guess that's a good thing. And you look at our part, uh, one crimes, we did have two part one crimes, largely we had some thefts. Uh, so there are eighteen total for this year. Last year it's seventeen. Our activity, self-generated activities also lower. Um, as you know, we're short currently, so we're, uh, we'll get back to speed here pretty soon. As far as what's going on, not near as much as what's going on with the fire department, but we do have a national lineup coming on Tuesday, October first. And we also have, uh, some open positions for police officers that have been posted on T M L, been posted on the city website and also on Facebook. We've already received a couple that we're looking at. And also, I'm proud to announce that next time you're in the council meeting, it'll be nice new carpet. We'll have a carpet coming in this Saturday. They'll re carpet the council chambers and the police. And with that, I'll be glad to take any questions.
National law has to be here.
Yes. Be, it's gonna be out here, uh, committee met, um. They meet last week.
August.
Well, no, it was the, the events committee, didn't they talk about it?
No.
No, that it, okay. Well, CCP or the E S A met, but we'll, we're gonna have it here. We're actually hopefully gonna have our canopy here by then, my new canopy with the police department, but guess it's all here, which makes it easy.
Six to eight hours from the next maybe.
Um, I think we'll be okay. We've reached out to Martin B. He's going to be here. Um. I can't remember who else is going to be out.
And we had share your helping in the matter, so I think they got it.
But no, I appreciate it. Just, just show up.
There.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. For administrative honor, I've got a great one. And.
The mayor and council. And one thing I want to add on to, while they're doing the carpet in here, uh, P D, whether people have to take all of this up. Because as y'all know, some script on the fires fall through here. And the plan right now is to swap this side to that side. So the staff will be over there because we have someone with, uh, who's a little prepared on the side of this. It's actually her work side, so we'd like to swap that over there so that we have the good year this way. I hate it because when I forget something, people now see me dart across them. Instead of, instead of just hip out, but, uh, so that is part of the plan is to swap that around for, uh, just for better. Very good. What was the ability to hear your, put this, you know, emotions in your settings? If you don't look to your page twenty two in your packet, we'll start with the company financials with our revenues. Um, it has been a good year. Uh, we are currently sitting at three hundred eighty three thousand over projections. We had, um, a lot of that is related to sales taxes continuing to increase. They're on a slow but steady incline. Um, additionally, uh, we didn't think we were going to see permits like this. So we're ninety one thousand dollars over in our permits, uh, for revenues because again, the houses, the size of the houses and the size of the permit fees are related to that square footage here. Okay, I'm doing commercial business every month here. Uh, these permits, right, were some of the ones I saw in economic development, so, uh, so again, revenues are very strong. If you got any questions on that. If you go to your next page again, um. Flattening, it's slow, but it's, it's still increasing our sales tax. And this does not account for, uh, water burger yet or eight, so we're always two months behind. And eight is is open. If you have. All right. When did it open? Pardon? When did it open?
About five days ago.
I was gonna say, it wasn't, it was not that long.
They haven't had their brand of.
I don't know that way at all. It's not. Not. Oh, yeah. We've been twice our, they might kiss.
It's amazing.
They'll think they don't like it on. That's. Yeah. They're not. They're not. They're not kidding. We're. You'll go on to page twenty four, the, uh, expenditures across all funds. This is, we've only one month left, uh, on these financials, which we're in our final month of the fiscal year now. So, uh, we'd like to see eight or nine percent left. Uh, everybody except municipal court is doing that. And again, if it's just over the dollar value or thirty two hundred dollars over in municipal court, and that was, we never did do a mid-year adjustment for. What's our?
Court prosecutor.
Prosecutor. Um, so we'll do that next month. We'll do all of our year-end budget adjustments, playing all of this up. Uh, but we're still twenty one percent available of, uh. Budgeted funds for the fiscal year. So again, sitting at three eighty three over revenues and still being, uh, within budget on all our other categories, except for municipal court. I feel pretty good, closing out the year strong. Uh, page twenty five, that's the breakdown of the individuals. I've got my detail if anybody has any questions on those. Um, again, we'd like to see eight or nine percent, and we are within that in all of our categories, um, on the administration side. Page twenty six. Hold your hand up, we, we slow down. Let's, I know y'all getting pretty fast at this. Uh, page twenty six is P D. Uh, chief is still in great shape. He's managing this well. Uh, he's had a few challenges with some cars and and some other things, but, uh, again, y'all have amended that budget for that. C C P D has stepped up and helped as well. And then on the dailies, uh, he, he keeps doing a good job of keeping that, uh, keeping the lid on it. Uh, so we're, we're in good shape overall financially with our expenditures. And we thought, I like to miss low on revenue side and and high on the other, on the expenditures. Do you have any questions? If said.
Well, it's not very much. Powerful. It was. If we were saying.
Thank you.
So we stay, we, we out there from month to month. Do you want? City members are pretty well overstating month to month. Yeah. That's what I like to say. I don't like wild fluctuations. It can happen, but I don't like.
Yeah.
Twenty one's up on those. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Thank you.
Thank you.
This agenda, this agenda consists of non-proportional house agreement, I'm applying law. I don't know, maybe you're putting on a certain motion. I don't know, maybe you're reviewing consent agenda, you have any councilor, and then it's just a fresh prior admission and vote on the consent agenda. Number one, consider approval on September third, two thousand twenty four, special meeting minutes. Number two, consider approval of contractor services agreement with Steve Cole for building inspection service. Services beginning October one, two thousand twenty four, times September thirtieth, two thousand twenty five, and authorize the town administrator to execute the same on behalf of the town. Number three, consider approval of contractor services agreement with American, Eric's coding partnership for code enforcement services beginning October one, two thousand twenty four. Through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty five, and authorize the town administrator to execute the same on behalf of the town. Number four, consider approval of contractor services agreement with Brad Hodges and Gaskell Inspector Services beginning October one, two thousand twenty four, which September thirtieth, two thousand twenty five. And authorize the town administrator to execute the same on behalf of the town. Number five, consider approval of contractor services agreement with Euro, British, North America, eight. For health services beginning October one, two thousand twenty four, through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty five, and authorize the town administrator to execute the same on behalf of the town. Number six, consider approval of contractor services agreement with Anna Caro for planning services, begin, beginning October one, two thousand twenty four. Through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty five, and authorize the town administrator to execute the same on behalf of the town. And number seven, consider approval to contractor services agreement with Annis Griffin, R S D S for O S S F. Services beginning October one, two thousand twenty four, through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty five, and authorize town administrator to execute the same on behalf of the town. This is for all our contractors, this is the throw of the motion.
I'll make a motion for you if you think Senate agenda has a red.
I'll say that. All of the better. Much better towards. I don't think. I don't matter.
That's a lot. That's. I'm saying.
Um. Yeah. Public hearing right by, that's public hearing on proposed tax rate of about two point seven three six four six per hundred. Per hundred, per hundred, I'll be set valuing this year October third, two thousand ninety four, for September. Number thirty, two thousand twenty five, staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, this is required by state law. We published the various tax rates that are calculated from the heart. Really, only twenty three, uh, valuations, uh, if you will. Uh, again, for our budget, we use the same, uh, tax rate as we've used in our previous two years. That rate, based on, again, no new value, voter approval rate and de minimis does not require us to hold an election, uh, to seek voter approval. However, again, citizens may still express their support for, uh, for or opposition to the proposed tax rate through the public hearing process. Um, again, we, there was the option to go up to a little over eighteen cents this year. Council decided they want to remain conservative as I have been and held it at the seventeen three six four six rate. Um, again, that's, that's where we are sitting today. And we use that number, we calculate that off of the values of seven hundred and forty five million, eight hundred and seventy seven thousand, four hundred and nine dollars worth of, uh, estimated taxable value. And I'll answer any questions to my hands.
Question. No question. Timing six fifty four, open the public hearing. Would anyone want to speak in favor? Would anyone want to speak in opposition? Timing six fifty four, close the public hearing. Number two, conduct public hearing, receive public comment, and reconsider replat twenty three, twenty six, seven, five acres, and proxy law one. R one, lot one, R two, and lot five, and lot five R, of the people in this nation in the town bar, and we're done in Texas, that we have in Texas. The purpose of the replat is to remove emergency access easement and remove utility easement. The subject property is located on one side of Stone, the goal that are immediately more than the intersection of Timber Ridge Lane. The applicants are Randy and Tyler Hatcher, Mark, Tina, Anderson, and Michelle. Tom, Bart, Bill, Kyle, and Rick, and two thousand twenty four, zero, zero, two. Staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, if you look at the plat, it's, uh, I don't know what page that is in your, looks like page ninety five. Okay, that's. Call the page. Uh, you can see that, uh, there is a residential lot on Stonewood, and this was, uh, originally brought forward by Mark Anderson. He just wanted to vacate the, uh, emergency access easement. That is what this letter that y'all saw, uh, at your place was related to. So you needed to know that E S D was not going to be impacted. But those three properties that are part of this replat actually go all the way up to country court, private country court. So that's why they're okay, uh, abandoning the set emergency access easement because they would come to country court anyway to get these other two parcels. As far as fire service. Uh, but again, it was the, the whole primary purpose is to vacate the, the access easement, uh, because it's not needed. And if you go out there and see Mr. Anderson's layout of his house, it's basically like this gravel over, right up to your pool. And then going up to the adjacent property. And although it was supposed to be an emergency access easement, it had been used. It's for people just coming through and don't have to cause a lot of discord. So that's why all three of the property owners have come together to make this application for replat. Um, and again, I would go through all of the information. Uh, this is a minor replat, so it did not activate a P and Z. That's why there's no P and Z recommendation. Uh, but because it vacates an easement, it does have to go to council, so we can't just do a major P and Z signatures on this like some minor flats, uh, do. And it does substantially, uh, uh, conform with improved preliminary plan and other studies. Um, with our own construction or engineering plans, uh, the zoning does not change with this replat. Uh, and again, we're going to deny, but our P and Z first. That's. By conditions of approval, I will go over those so that if you can be part of the motion, should you so act. Um. This would support the replats aligned with the approval criteria, uh, and the standards of the Bartonville government board. Since again, I did, I have Ryan here, so he writes, uh, pretty much everything you have to help. Through the process, we did come up with these conditions and staff recommendations with these conditions. Prior to your coordination of the plat, new ten foot wide utilities would show me established along the frontage of parcel one, R one, A, or whether you like to lay stone with a bull guard. And this is circles part of the replat, but that's on every residential lot we have. Yeah. That's. Easy in the front. Prior to the coordination of the plat, close ten point eight four one A for lot five R dash A should be relabeled as lot one, dash R two, dash A. General number four shall add to the purpose statement of the replat to combine lots one, R two, and five. General number two shall be correctly numbered. The item number is currently missing. The number block for Tina Anderson's signature shall have her name correctly spelled. And I'll answer any questions. And the applicant, uh, the primary applicant, Mark Anderson, is here. Um, I don't see no one. Uh, if y'all have any questions, you can ask them.
We also have letters. Did everyone stop for the S D? Same.
Sir. Is there?
When you do a replat and you combine blocks with it, does that require?
And you combine blocks with, does that require? Uh, a survey. Once we'll grant this, will we argue on the, the random, what we have to, and the re-survey to, to track that on the survey?
They don't have to re-survey. That is all part of the application process is they typically, these come in from the surveyors. They hire a surveyor to come in and they establish all of those needs and facts. So. How do they, they, once, if this is approved by council, we'll get the signatures, leave the town files with the county. So that'll be the.
Okay.
Mr. Anderson, would you like to?
Uh, not unless you guys have a question. He was correct about that. He is so close to my full opinion. And drive by the way that. And I haven't had a lot of people show up at my property in the past and just. For all the fans or open the gate to drive off the property or walk, walk around. It's been this kind of.
That easement is currently accessible from Stonewood to Country Court. Are there gates there?
From, uh, where you go around the rusting circle and there's that old closed sack. He's, he has gone to Stonewood Rustic.
But there's, I'm assuming that all property owners have fences or there's gates there. So, so people can go access those gates.
Right. And so they've been locked for the last two years. They've posted no trespassing signs of. People drive up. I don't know who they are. I haven't had an idea how they, and they'll go over there and rattle the gate and look at it like they're wanting to get in. Then I'll draw a line off of this one.
Mark, will you give me a favor?
Yeah.
We're gonna do this all in a minute. I apologize.
If, if everybody heard me, that's, that was all I was gonna say. So, okay.
Time being seven oh one, open public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak in favor? Anybody wish to speak in opposition? Time being seven oh one, call the public hearing. No more discussion.
Mayor, if you have it, do you have a motion if they would include those conditions? Conditions need to be read.
Well, just reference that.
I think it's pretty simple, too, to easy.
Yeah, it's pretty easy. I'll make a motion, uh, that we approve the replat of a. Twenty-three point six seven five acres comprising lots one dash R one, lot one dash R two. Of lot five and five R, a yearless condition of the town of Barnumville, County, Texas. Subject to the conditions outlined in staff's recommendation.
I'll say.
All of them fair. Motion carries. Number three, discuss, consider approval of ordinance demanding, uh, the ordinance proven and adopting a budget for fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand twenty-four. Beginning September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Staff presentation.
And again, Mayor and Council, um, if y'all have any specific questions, I will answer them. Uh, Councilman Randall. Made a great point and panicked momentarily to Portia and then I sat down and she reminded me. So. But those numbers do match up. So it isn't just on page, uh, Councilman Randall pointed out on page one twenty-three. Under the street maintenance sales tax restricted fund. Typically, when you see estimated, uh, well, when you see beginning fund balance and ending fund balance, that next year should match. So again, that should carry forward. What I've run into on those street maintenance. And actually the main one. So if you go back and look at the general fund, is those numbers are not carried. That was, these are estimates. And that's why I added that piece in there. We are so far behind on the audit. Until I get an audit number. I'm giving you my best guess of what we're gonna land at, uh, because we still got a month left. Chief's got some expenditures going. So. That's why those do not match up and why I added that estimated. Okay, beginning any fund balance there. It's a good catch, but, um, but again, I gave you the chance to, to talk a little bit about the fact. You know, when I first got here, we had Bill Score as the accountant that the town had been using. But he was also affiliated with the, uh, audit company. That can't happen. You have to have a split between your accountant and your auditing firm. We went through that last year with Cheryl. Um, who did a nice job, the accountant, um, and the, uh, audit firm. She's no longer doing it. So we have. Two young, uh, two in the couple is now in the accounting side. They didn't know funding. So that is why we. Company of errors, just a lot of things that stacked up to delay the audit, uh, for twenty-two and three. We should be done that. The hope is, now that they're up to speed, Shannon, those funding will be a lot better. I know more about it still. Uh, it's very proprietary. What'd you say? It's really proprietary. So. Oh, a lot of smaller towns use funding, you know, not a lot bigger towns do. So we're, there's just a learning curve. SDW was a big one that we used and Hasslet together. Uh, and then the other one is. Open Gov won't even touch us because we're too small. The, the city the size of Hasslet, you know, they were gonna charge two hundred twenty thousand dollars suspension or something. So we're. Do open up. And so, yeah, that's why we're not done with the audit. That's why those, I'm comfortable with the budget you're looking at. But that's why those do not currently line up. We will do a mid-year after, uh, fix those.
Don't match up at the final once you get the.
Yes. As soon as I print September, I can actually correct a lot of this.
It's all there.
Good catch.
Yeah, that's all I mean.
Any other?
Thank you.
I mean, I can go over the lines. No, I think they were probably good there.
Yeah. Well, I know we said it before, but I'll say it again. Thank you, Sharon Chief, for getting all the numbers together and making it. Where it's easy to re-follow, not only for us, but for our residents that take a minute.
Yeah, I'll add, I was speaking with some residents here in town and some residents from Barnumville and. Preparing the information that was available, seeing as the residents of Barnumville, elsewhere, they were shocked at the level of transparency that was provided. That's. Because, yeah, which you guys are putting. That makes me happy and proud that I can say that we're doing better than the next guy. So.
Well, that's true. That's been the direction from y'all as well. So the mayor, I've always talked about being transparent. This is, this is the people's government. And so we do our best. It is a team effort, but y'all's. Support in what we're doing always helps. And again, the mayor's been very clear, we're going to be transparent.
Well, the proof.
We appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance about the budget for the fiscal year beginning on October first, twenty twenty-four. And ending on September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Sorry.
Roll call. Mayor Proton Chapman?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sands?
Yeah.
Councilmember Randall?
Yeah.
And Councilmember Aaron's?
Yeah.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mayor. Number four, discuss, consider approval of ordinance verifying Ad Warren property tax early reflected in the. Adoption fiscal year October one, two thousand twenty-four, to September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, annual budget. Discussion. Is there any discussion?
All right, we have to read the whole thing.
Yes, please. This is roll call and, and law.
All right, I'll read this and take it a little bit. See if I can do this, man. Uh, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point one seven three six four six. Which is effectively a twelve point zero six percent increase in the tax rate. And also move to approve ordinance adopting the twenty twenty-four tax rules and fixing and letting municipal Ad Warren taxes. For the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-four, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And for each fiscal year thereafter until otherwise provided at the rate of zero point one seven three six four six. For one hundred dollars assessed valuation on all taxable property within the corporate limits in town of Barnumville as of January thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Roll call. Mayor Proton Chapman?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sands?
Yeah.
Councilmember Randall?
Yeah.
Councilmember Aaron's? Yeah. Full session, pursuant to that, we're meeting Jack, because I have a long consultation with town attorney, seeing whether the boss can be determined. Regarding unusual issues related to the town's extra territorial jurisdiction. Issues related to the country and relevant issues related to emergency access to and from neighboring property and all. Any and all legal issues related thereto. Number two, section five five one twenty oh seven four, personal matters to deliver. Consider appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of public officer to our employees, the town administrator. Time seven oh nine, uh, we're convened in a push.
How are you?
All the.
You do a good job. Uh, I can go since you.
Rush, did she want to go?
I did the number about he moved or I didn't really think I did. Oh, I wonder if they lose.
And he just started.
Over.
Now, we would be.
Yeah, that's.
We don't, they don't really have to.
And.
Well, that caused. She did. She said, you know, shut down the grant.
And he called him.
It just allow. Oh, so that. How do we get there? How do we, how do we get whatever? Was it that way or when you, you were trying to put? It's, it didn't come along months earlier for a spring. So, for a spring, we weren't even learning now. He's there in the south. I had him in the valley and said, hey, is your, you know, those are. Can they sort of, wouldn't sort of like, you know.
Brooklyn, you have it. They showed his house, his house, looking at it.
It evolved somehow into. Gate here living. That we can get there.
Yeah, yeah, I wanna sit down and talk to you at some point.
Yeah.
So congratulations, I guess. We do. You know, it's a problem meeting. But that was one of the things when I came here. Cause where I came from, CCPD, where it was counted. So, which I like it.
Yeah.
We didn't have it.
I don't know what, maybe when it started, but I know from the Atlanta. Certain percentage sort of.
Yes, yes. Uh, if you can go anywhere, it's a quarter cent here. Jersey Village with the Habs, and they actually, you know, passed it from our department before I was there. We get a quarter cent instead of six. But not in Atlanta, right? It's a, we don't get. We don't get the quote, any of that shop in there. Now, hoping for. Because they did some time, but years ago, they changed because they're like, so they're trying to get. They get, now we get, we get some there to tax it. Nothing goes as you. We got a balance right about two. But we still have a circle. And what we try and, is what I try to spend what I can. Cause it can be spread by police department to offset. Residents and things like that that they need or, you know, any. So, we'll, we'll see. And we'll see, usually what we see a projection be okay. This past year, we did quite a lot of cars. Let me know when a good time is and we can meet.
When I was up in the house, so when I was just trying to get the point for it, so, you know.
That's, that's the main goal.
Kind of the challenge.
I don't know that. Yeah, the only thing.
No, but I mean, that way you get to, you know, get, you can ask any questions you need. I can give you a couple of things. It's nice to have that budget. I'm assured of our budget.
How is she?
So. But it's a nice, you don't do too much in there.
But it's a nice, you don't do too much in there. So you know, it's pretty solid, I mean, I think Chris. So when did you serve on campus?
When they're thirty years from now, they get.
I'll say, yeah, I'll do.
Yeah, so we, I came in right at the end of the draw. And yeah, all of that, like a year or ten before I. I'm like, I'm not here to, I'm not here to run in anybody's.
Multi paper. Part of the grandest politics, Rockwater politics, they had like fifty thousand, and then you got, it's a, and then you got like. J V's.
Yeah.
I mean, I had some buddies ask me. Yeah. But you know, we had good. Glad I got the opportunity to come here. I saw this, I'm like. Always beautiful, my wife and I grow up, I sit in the.
So where do you live?
I live in White Rock, so I actually, I work in the country, live in the city, so it's about a eight, tonight, it'll take me about fifteen minutes. Cause usually I live. I live like four or three if I get here. And if I leave like at three, four, five o'clock, it's maybe about fifteen. But it's not bad, I just, my wife hasn't, she stays in the same city, three houses. Or at least closer.
Bullisville for five, six years.
Everything. I'm gonna blast that, and you're good talking to you all, send me your.
I so appreciate it. See Shannon, bye. You too, we'll just see you. Absolutely, appreciate it. So just driving out and saying hi, huh?
It's just wrong.
Are they gonna put the bars up to the carpet before they redo it?
No.
So we won't have trip.
Hopefully, yes.
Okay.
Twenty seven, we need an open session, um there are no, I don't know one. I don't know two. You said that, all's right, motion carries. Are there any future gentlemen?
Yeah, if I were you. You know, we all know. And very well aware of the these boys that we have. The government. There's some things that we can cannot do. In order to say thank you, we don't do that sometimes all enough, but one way was to. Try and keep them in top say to what we can say to them in the morning. The other was to just ours, you find a mix, we're flexible, we're easy to. Be motivated, I don't know, that must be, we we care. And we're patient, cause you look at part of them, we're fortunate to have people that we've been, you look at the police chief. You look at that, and you look at Chan, you look at the girls. This is the bottom of the office. You know, how many other towns would be welcome to have that type of quality employees? Now, having said that, the only thing we can't do, we can't change the world. Can't do anything about that. And if you look at what that, what he's done, the hours that he spent on this. The time that we've been sitting down and waiting, something, I mean, these teams, there are teams, but. They went, we also noticed that when someone needs to step up and did a home what they do. And they bring us to the, to the grassy. We got a police chief, he's got forty cents a year at the service. Counting towns, there's sixteen hundred ways that they will offer, a police chief. That's been through what he's been through in his experience. So I guess what I'm trying to get is that we know how capable he is. He runs the streets. Police chief. He says he's loving. He's a bigger person. He's, he's got great leadership skills and those huge return shares. Now, the only thing that we can do to our workloads is to, if we look at what that's done. What he's got on his plate, and we know why he's got it on his plate, because of our experience with that, with other councils. But. You know, he's got. Shannon, the girls, the police chief. Run the streets, chair in Congress, then in the third, I mean. What more can you ask for the town administrator, if you know one thing we can do, is to try and take some workload off of him. Then do what he really needs to be done, and take care of citizens worldwide, and I would propose that the council talk about moving that police chief. Underneath the middle and back to the council, and that will take off, I think, a load. That in time, it will let him allow to go ahead and work on other things that he needs to have.
So you want to put that on the next agenda?
Yes, and I, and I heard the council talk about.
Okay.
Thank you. They wanted me. So we appreciate all of you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, we do. Any other agenda items? Time being seven twenty-nine.